The mayor will not acknowledge that most.
Exactly.
Good.
Congratulations.
Oh, thank you.
Congratulations on what?
We just found out earlier today it's going to be a boy.
Oh, there you go.
Awesome.
Yeah.
You gonna call him Billy Boy?
All right. Good evening to all. It's just a minute past five o'clock. We're on our way to have our council meeting. So we're calling everyone to order. And we'd like to recognize Cory McCarthy for Channel 32 and Renee Sevan for Temple Star. Thank you for doing this service to us all. We will start our meeting with our prayer with by Councilor Creed, please. Thank you.
Our Father in heaven, as we gather together for our council meeting for the Town of Carters this evening, we're grateful to thee for this opportunity, grateful for this community and for the good people who serve in many ways. As we deliberate on the agenda that we have, we pray for thy blessing to give us wisdom and inspiration to make those choices and decisions which will be of the most good. And pray that we'll be able to be clear in our minds and have the help that we need. And as we pray in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Councilor, for the prayer, we just need to add one item to the agenda. We will add up the agenda and then we will deal with our recognition of services. So there will be one addition that we need to put on the agenda on the correspondence, and we're going to put it under G. And there will be the AHS letter that is on your desk. Okay? So I need a motion to approve the agenda. Councilor Edmonds, approve the agenda as amended. All in favor? Thank you. Adopted. Okay, so now we need to go on with the fun business. Wade, we'd like you to come here, and it's my pleasure to welcome you here in our chambers. We don't always have the privilege to have fun things to do. So thank you so much for your very wonderful ten years of services that you give to the town. I know that you're a little bit of a chameleon, you know? One time you're in public works, one time you're in water, one time you're in sewer. I don't know which color you are, but I mean, you can see already the outfit kind of fits the chameleon third. So thank you so much. You have a very pleasant personality, and your hard work and great skills have been a wonderful asset to our town, so keep up the good work. Thank you so much. Do you want to take a picture or something? I'm sure Wade wants a picture.
Where's Ray?
I'll do a selfie or something.
I'll get you. Don't worry about it, Ray.
You'll tweet a selfie.
Yeah, we'll go this way. All right, one, two, three. Let me get one more to be sure. One, one, two, three. All right.
Well done. Thank you so much. Hopefully, it was going to be well when you get your fifteen to twenty.
Ten, twelve megapixel now? You can be so much stuff on.
Well, Marion, while you're standing, I'm sure you can come this way.
Thank you very much.
You gotta shake everybody's hand, Ray.
That's right, make the round.
Today, it's a wonderful day. Oh, Marion, you didn't know that was coming. Why were you?
Seventy-five years.
Well, Marion, Marion has served twenty-five years as of May 1st in this town, and she has worn many, many hats. She started as utility clerk, then she worked in finances, then she worked with economic development and tourism, I would imagine, that was part of this. She also worked as director of administration. And in 2008, she went for the big job, the CEO that we know, and we want to thank her for absolute excellent work, great professionalism. Marion is one who has completed an ACLA administration, municipal administration courses, and has a certificate, so she's a full-fledged qualified town administrator who has given a lot of service to many other people who always request her wisdom and who has done a lot of great work for us in our town. The auditors can always praise Marion for the great administration that she runs in this town. And so, Marion, thank you so much for what we have done. Surely appreciate it. And as a token, a recognition, you have a flag. Maybe also a little token of thank you from the town and a letter of thank you. Thank you. Picture.
All right, Councilor Barnes, out of the way there.
That's what I was doing.
All right, one more. One, two, three. Okay, good.
Thank you. Marion, if you want the box, you tell me where to have the picture. Okay, that's wonderful. All right, we need a motion to adopt the minutes that are on the front of you once we finish shaking hands.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Marion.
Yep.
All right, you have the motion, you have the minutes from the May 13 council meeting, and if you approve them, we need a motion to do so.
I move approval of the minutes from May 13, 2014.
Thank you, Councilor Edmonds, as the move that we approved the minutes. All in favor? Oh, do you have a question?
Question, yeah. I'll just consult with Councilor Barfus on this, on this, on the motion 1461 on the plebiscite. I thought I made that motion last time, in the last council meeting.
I believe you did.
Okay, so, so we need to do one correction. The motion that was made on the plebiscite was in fact made by Councilor Creed. Thank you for remembering. And so we will approve the amended minute. All in favor? Thank you. All right, on the number six, business arising, we have the item of the plebiscite. Now, the plebiscite, as you could see, Tyler did an excellent job at providing us with different type of plebiscite wordings. What I really want you to do is some homework. For the CCW, would you please come up with two different wordings for chicken and for the fluoride? We also will have to have you decide on a date of the plebiscite. We said up to now that end of September, beginning of October would probably be better. Just have a look at your schedule, your agendas, and come back with a date. The time will be from 10 to 8 when we do it. It has been traditionally on a Monday for voting, so keep that in mind. And the same night, the same evening when we discuss the plebiscite, we will also have the full documentation regarding backyard hands. Okay? So all that will be there, and we will deal with that whole item as one item.
Do we need a motion to table that, or do we need a hall?
No, we just need to accept that we have a little bit of homework to do.
So you want us to come up with two questions?
We want, yes, one regarding, at least two. I mean, you can, you can think of different scenarios for the chickens and for the fluoride. Okay? Good enough? Let's move on. The, on the six B, Alan Carron, lifetime golf membership, as you remember, we discussed that at the CCW. The question was, does council intend to, in the light of all the information that you have, does council intend to create precedent by changing the status of those lifetime golf memberships or accept that they are non-transferable and were deemed as such when the town took over and therefore the status quo would have to carry on? So I have prepared myself a debrief, but I would like to hear from all of you on this matter. Okay? Councilor Creed?
Actually, I wrote two possible resolutions.
Okay.
The one, after I talked to Dean Somerville at Black Sands, I kind of settled on the second one would be better, and which was, whereas the Black Sands Management Group would be the most affected by the sale of Harland Coon's lifetime membership, let it be resolved that Harland's request be referred to the Black Sands Management Group to find the best settlement option to satisfy all concerned parties. In other words, they have, they have an interest in it more than we do, and if they want to make any precedence, it should be them because they're managing the golf course. That was my feeling.
Okay, that is an interesting resolution. Questions?
That's actually not far off where my thoughts were on it. The concern that I have is that whoever, Harland said himself he doesn't play very much golf, doesn't make these plays. So whoever he sells it to, it's going to be one less membership that the Black Sands is going to sell. But more than that, it's going to set a precedent of us allowing that. And there are a number of other of those lifetime memberships that don't get used very much currently because they don't live here that would then, again, withdraw some revenue there from the Black Sands. That's where I would differ in that I do think it's a town issue and not a Black Sands Management Group, and I wouldn't want to pass that on to the Black Sands because it would have greater impact on more than just Harland.
Okay, so that's another good point. Anybody else? Councilor Pivoy, do you have an opinion on the matter? I know that the golf course was probably way before your time in the town.
Well, yeah, that's not a unique opinion.
Yeah, okay. Councilor Barnes?
I, I still, I feel, you know, Harland did provide some land for the golf course. I think he contributed quite considerably. I don't, I don't have a problem with him selling his, his membership. That's my take on it.
Councilor Edmonds?
But if he sell it once, when that person gets to the point where he no longer play golf than I sell?
No, I think it stops with Harland. I think this is an exception.
The lifetime membership is lifetime.
I'm, I'm related with, with the things that have been said here tonight, but the thing that is, it boils back to the town, is the town originally had the, had the Black Sands Golf Course, and we, we do own the golf course. It will make an impact on the Black Sands Management Group. At the same token, I understand that it's one of their members that wants to buy the membership. And if it wasn't for the donation, like Councilor Barnes said, of that land, and it was a donation, we wouldn't have all seventeen. Where would we complete the eighteen hole course? And if there's a condition set on the sale of this lifetime membership, if there's a condition set on this lifetime membership, he sells it once, and it expires in, what, 20, 30, or something like that?
Could be ten years.
Yeah, yeah.
So the two, the two concerns I have there is, like you said, the, is a black, it's a current member of Lee Creek Golf Course that we want to buy it.
Right.
That means that forever from now on, that membership is not going to be paid to Black Sands. So it's going to take money out of Black Sands' pocket.
Okay.
The second part to that is, is the, if we set the precedent of changing what a lifetime membership means now, are we going to have somebody come back and ask to change the 20, 30, or whatever date we put on it, under the same basis?
No, because there's only four memberships we have.
All right, let's hang in there. Councilor Edmonds?
But if he's going to sell it, shouldn't other people have the opportunity to get it?
That's the whole point, yeah.
I think, I think the reason to want to sell a lifetime membership is for financial gain. I mean, you know, for the remuneration of the lifetime membership. I think that rather than worry about setting a precedent, if, if we all agree, hey, we want to, we want to remunerate him for the value of his lifetime membership that he's not able to use, but we also don't want to set a precedent that these are transferable, would it then not be the same thing to create a new lifetime membership that we sell, we sell, the proceeds of which we gift to Harland? So we're, he keeps his and obviously can't really use it.
All right.
We create a new one, we give him the money for that as our thanks for what he donated.
I understand what you're saying.
That's kind of essentially what we're deciding. I mean, it's just the other side, that same coin.
Do, does anybody else want another packet? Otherwise, I will present what I have prepared, and then we can decide what to vote. Is that fair? Good enough? Okay, so I'm going to go, it's going to be a little bit more lengthy than your, your presentation, but I think it's important that we understand, you smiling, that we understand all the aspects.
We're not afraid of anything. Go ahead. We're just talking over.
Well, if you remember, Mr. Carron has put forth to council some specific reasons for his request, okay, to be allowed to transfer his golf lifetime membership. And he cited, number one, his failing health that no longer allows him to enjoy his membership. Second thing that he said is he requested to be fairly compensated for having donated a piece of land for the expansion of the golf course, which was all seventeen at the time. Three, a third, and he also wanted his financial contribution acknowledged for having cosigned a loan to save the golf course from being sold due to a builder's lien on the course in 2001, and this prior to the town taking the golf course over. So in answer to this request, I will express my personal and unbiased point of view. Mr. Carron and his wife each hold the lifetime memberships that were issued in 1999 by the Golf Course Association, and was in recognition of what he did for the expansion. So Article 5 reads, this document is non-transferable, usage applies only to the individual listed above. Article 6 reads, this membership is non-revocable and is to remain in place in the event that golf course ownership is changed during the term of the membership. And Article 7 reads, in the event of death, this membership is deemed to be terminated. So it's fairly clear. Second thing that I want to talk about is a donation of the land. Donation of the land was a philanthropic act by Mr. Carron. Philanthropy does not seek compensation by the sheer nature of the act. It is a noble and commendable act that brings personal satisfaction to the donor. Having said this, certain recognition for his contribution toward the expansion was given by the Calston Golf Course Association at the time, when the association issued the two lifetime memberships to the Carrons for their enjoyment. No clause is attached on the document regarding the frequency of the use of that membership. It is up to the individual. It only states that it is personal, non-revocable, and non-transferable, and terminated at the death of the holder. It does not account for inevitable aging and sickness of the holder of the membership. Mr. Carron was also given a sponsorship call that he passed on to his friend and mistress. Council should note that fifteen years has passed by without Mr. Carron ever expressing his feeling that compensation was inadequate. So we should read into this that he was satisfied for fifteen years with a membership issued by the Golf Association and happy to have made a voluntary contribution to the expansion of the course, of which no doubt the town has benefited. There is no doubt that Mr. Carron helped avoid the foreclosure of the golf course when it was managed by the Calston Golf Association and prior to the town taking it over by cosigning a loan taken by Don Bishop to remove the builder's lien on the course. But Mr. Carron also needs to acknowledge that two investors, namely Mr. Jensen and Mr. Self, who also had lifetime memberships, lost all their investments when a town took the course over from the county in 2001, while he did not suffer any losses since the loan was fully repaid. Council of the day chose to compensate only two members of the Calston Golf Association who lost their full investment, Mr. Jensen and Mr. Self. And the reason the council of the day chose to compensate these two individuals is because they did not appear on the creditors' list and were not reimbursed a percentage of their losses as all other creditors did. In fairness, the town then issued two transferable memberships each to Mr. Jensen and to Mr. Self. And there are, and these are the only two memberships that would ever be transferable and sellable. In my opinion, the cosigning of the loan by Mr. Harland, although a potential financial risky move, cannot be equated to the absolute total loss of cash asset incurred by Mr. Jensen and Mrs. Self. For fifteen years, it appears that Mr. Carron was also of this opinion. And so even if I have empathy for his failing health, on ethical grounds, I cannot support changing the status of Mr. Carron's lifetime membership on a ground of health issue, and I surely do not expect council to create an unnecessary precedent for delayed entitlement by issuing new and transferable memberships for compensation that is now deemed insufficient thirteen years after the fact. And this is my position. So we have a motion on the table. Would you please restate your motion, Councilor?
Yeah, all right. And if you don't like that one, we can, you know, not attach to it, but, yeah, okay, I'll read that, and if you don't like this motion, you'll find another one. Whereas the Black Sands Management Group would be the most affected by the sale of Harland Coon's lifetime membership, now therefore let be resolved that Harland's request be referred to the Black Sands Management Group to find the best settlement option to satisfy all concerned parties.
I'd like to ask a question to administration, if that's even a motion that can be entertained because of the nature of the relationship with the Black Sands. They are the Lisi, we are the Liso. It's a business item?
Yeah, I would suggest that maybe the motion could be that it be referred for their input, and, and you would accept their position on it. I don't think that they can transfer the membership.
They make the decision, but we, we ask them for input?
Right.
Yeah, can we, let me see.
And I would suggest that, given that they're the ones that are managing the golf course, they're the ones that financially are going to be at risk for future ones as well. So they, they may be...
So can Councilor Creed put that in his motion? Yeah, we, we just changed that, that we asked for Black Sands' opinion. Okay, let me see, the, okay, we'll leave the first, whereas...
I like the whereas.
And let it be resolved that Harland's request be referred to Black Sands Management Group to find their opinion on the validity or...
Transferability.
Transferability or of Harland's request, or to find out what, what impact they would receive, what impact they would...
I don't think that you want the impact. I think what you're looking for is, are they...
Advisability?
Yeah.
Are they willing to let it happen?
Yeah, what their advisability would be on permitting the transfer, isn't it?
Refer, maybe to refer this item to the Black Sands for their advice on the...
They're not there to fight, because they're just going to spring it out.
Yeah.
Just give, give it a right to Black Sands?
Well, I, I think at the end of the day, though, that because it's the town that owns it, that we actually have to pass a motion whether we're going to do it or not.
I don't think we do. We give them to that, to them to manage.
But we, we need administration input.
We're effectively changing a legal document.
Yeah. Marion, do you want to say something?
I think Councilor Barfus spoke to what I was going to say.
Yeah, it is a legal document.
This is maybe a question for administration. Does Black Sands currently have the power and authority to create lifetime memberships for the golf course we own?
No, they don't.
So essentially, the problem in delegating this issue to them is, we're essentially saying, hey, we need you to solve this lifetime membership problem without maybe explicitly giving them the power to create a lifetime membership or new lifetime memberships. So are we trying to maybe add in here, hey, you have the power to, say, add a couple?
What I would suggest is, is that it's going to them, for them to say, this is what we would like to see happen, and it comes back here and we...
Okay, so a simple motion to refer this item to Black Sands Management for their advice on the matter.
Exactly.
For their opinion on, on that, on this item.
Yeah, on item, I think that was.
I think that's probably the fair way to do it.
Okay.
Read it. Refer to their, to Black Sands for their advice.
Could you reread this?
Whereas Black Sands Management Group would be the most affected by the sale of Harland's memberships and different Coon's memberships, therefore let it be resolved that Harland Coon's request be...
It's Harland and Jane.
When Jane Coon's request be referred back to Black Sands Management Group to find their opinion on permitting the transfer of Harland's request. I'm going to say the sale of the lifetime membership. I think, I think you want to get clear.
Regarding the sale of the lifetime membership, yeah. Okay, are we good on that one? We did one more time, so we, we know for sure what we're voting on.
Whereas the Black Sands Management Group will be the most affected by the sale of their memberships, Coon's memberships, therefore let it be resolved that Harland and Jane Coon's request be referred to Black Sands Management Group to find their opinion regarding the sale of the lifetime memberships.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for taking the time of seeking an opinion. All right, we go on to six C, policy, the O-10-2, Calston Opportunity Initiative Policy. As you could see, the yellow that is in that policy is other changes, representative changes that have been made to the policy. The purpose to the, of this policy is to assist individual groups and organizations for project seed funding for new events that would have a potential to drive economic activity. It is just not given for everybody that comes in town and desire to put at this run of this, whatever, this marathon or whatever, unless it has an impact on our town. This is a day event, it takes place in the middle of the day, and it didn't really fit. That fundraiser in particular, with the Alzheimer's run, didn't fit the policy we had, but the policy is now tightened up. So I need a motion to approve the changes made to this policy. Councilor Barfus?
I'll move the changes to the policy be approved as written in our document here.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, may I ask that the motion read to approve policy...
Number zero ten two.
Zero ten dash two, so that it's clear.
Absolutely.
As a matter of...
You can start.
As a matter of...
I move that the policy ten dash, zero dash ten dash two be approved as presented to us.
As revised.
Question asked.
As presented.
Number four, under the guidelines, all application will be submitted to the town seventy-five days prior to the starting event date. Is that going to be effective of our budget when we're doing our annual budget? Have we got money put away for initiatives?
We always do.
We budget annually for events that we know will be reaplying for year two through, two through five, and we also put a little bit of money in there for new initiatives.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you for asking for your questions. Always good to make sure we know what we're doing. It's true. All right, request for decisions. The pool rate, as you could see, the Parks and Rec has asked that we revise the pool rate. The reason for not having prorated rate as to the normal of this and the pool will be open is because right now it's nothing but an inconvenience to the citizens of our town. So the idea was one, to acknowledge that not having the pool openness of the first of June is problematic, and we're not hundred percent sure at this point that it will be open on the sixteenth of June, as we hope. So the idea of reducing the rates would be to create an incentive for families to come to town and to use a pool to the best capacity that we can get at that. So are we in favor or are we not in favor of those rates? Marion, you want to add something?
Just for clarification, it's just the season pass, not the draw-in, the rush pass.
The family passes and the individual season passes.
Season passes.
Okay? Counsel Banbury?
Are you prepared to make a motion?
I'm asking, I'm asking if you are, please go ahead. Go ahead.
Whereas the town of Calston is not definite on the opening date of the new swimming pool, taking under advisement from our Parks and Recreation, I make a motion that we, we...
Accept.
Accept the proposed reduction in the family pass for the season of 2014 and for the individual pass for the season of 2014.
Can we just put the amount in there?
Yes, family pass.
Jill's already got it.
To be seven?
Yeah, to be set. At seventy-five dollars for a family and thirty-five dollars for an individual pass.
Season pass.
Season pass.
Thank you. Any questions? Counsel Creed?
Just questioning the season. I was trying to do some calculations.
Yeah, they're not prorated at all.
Right, I can see that. How long does the sea, what, what does the pool normally close?
September fifth. September long weekend.
So, so essentially the end of August.
It's about three months.
Yeah, about three months. So we're, we're cutting the season by a third and cutting the pass by almost half, but...
Yeah, it's not meant to be prorated. It's meant to allow it to be an incentive so that the people who are going out of town come back here.
I would also just note, we're a little concerned too, we may not have all the landscaping a hundred percent done, and there may be a little bit of work still going on here and there, and it's not going to be, you know, we're going to get open, and we may still be needing to add that one spray feature. You know, just a few little things that'll have to be tidied up as we go, so we won't be, maybe be at a hundred percent right off the top.
We're not giving them a perfect product, in other words, for their money.
We're saying thanks for your patience, basically.
I think we want to make sure that we draw as many people in, in the community to that new facility as we can this year.
So that it creates next year.
So that they come back next year.
Counsel Peabody?
Yeah, at the same time, one of my fears is that next year, all, all I'm going to remember when I go is it was seventy-five bucks this year. So if they, you know, there's a big broadcast thing, it's one hundred and thirty-eight slash today only seventy-five, so they really understand you do not get this price next year.
Maybe that should be included.
We're not gipping you next year, gave you a break last year.
Maybe that should be included in the motion as Counsel Banbury...
He said for the season only.
This isn't only...
I was just saying to Jeff, and maybe this goes along with Counsel Peabody's comments, that, you know, perhaps we could do up some kind of a big splash that's that. You know, your season pass is one hundred and thirty-five or whatever. This year you get in for seventy-five. How about donating the balance to get the water splash? You know, like, I think we could maybe use it as a, as a fundraising opportunity as well.
That was what I was going to suggest, actually, something similar to that, because, yeah.
But in the motion, it is 2014.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any more questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. Well done. All right, the next item is regarding the Calston Family Fund Run. Counsel Bond, do you want to talk to this, or you want me to go ahead with it?
Well, I, I'll just say a couple of things.
Okay, go ahead.
As we, as we discussed, there's so many things that are happening kind of close, close proximity, and the Parks and Rec just felt that it would be better if we put it off to a later date so it's not conflicting, and it gives them time to, you know, get away from the West Egg Centers situation with their youth days and stuff, and the Glacier Park relay. And so this gives a separate time, and it's an additional event sort of thing, you know, and so people aren't going to be saying, oh, man, we just add this one, another one right now, so this kind of separates it from everything else. And the potential for even funner event is there in August. And traditionally, we've had some problem with weather, having it early. We've ran into snow, we've ran into thunderstorms, and I mean, I mean, it's not, nothing precludes...
Talking about snow?
Yeah, but they have. So anyways, I, I agreed with them at the meeting, and I think this is a great time to do it. We talked about the possibility of becoming a color run, which is a, you know, a lot of people are doing this now, and they're having a great time. I had several of my family with them, and they just have a great, great time. So it'd be my, my opinion that we should move forward to go with this.
In the request for decision, there's a couple of mistakes there. It says that in the second paragraph, in the history of the issue, Parks and Recreation recommended the move to the third Saturday in August, and then at the recommended action was a motion for the fourth Saturday. We need to make that correction.
We need to make that change there, yeah.
So the fourth Saturday is what the motion needs to read?
Right now.
Okay. Counsel Bond, do you want to put a motion forward?
Sure, sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Do we have to start, whereas? Whereas the history of the Calston Family Fund Run was held earlier in the year and ran into some conflicts with other events, I propose that I make a motion that we take the suggestion of the Parks and Recreation Board to move the Calston Fund Run to the fourth week of August for 2014.
Fourth Saturday.
Fourth, the fourth Saturday, yeah, in August for the Family Fund Run.
Okay. Question?
One quick question. I'm sorry, what's colored, huh?
A color run, they have a special kind of non-toxic powder, and everybody's wet, and they're throwing powder, and they end up looking like rain colored. And you just have a lot of, a lot of fun, it's a color fight.
All right, so we have...
So Mary's done it.
We have a motion on the table, so all in favor? Thank you. Carrie? All right, there is no financial report this month. Committee and other reports, I want to commend you for all your wonderful committee reports. We are not going to pass a lot of time on those, except for some of the couple points that I will have to get clarified.
Clarified in the airport committee report that I made out. The fly-in breakfast is on June fourteenth, not June eighth, and it's from eight to ten thirty.
Saturday then.
So...
Let me read it again.
June fourteenth, Saturday.
All right. Last year, Counsel Creed and I flipped pancake and made the bacon. Are they, Inida asked me to come, and I will come to help them.
They're asking anybody that can come to be there about seven o'clock in the morning?
Okay, seven o'clock to start flipping. Okay. All right, thank you very much. I have one question for you, Counsel Banbury and Counsel Bond, is regarding a governance issue of your committee on fire. Well, it's not on fire.
We're burning.
Fire today.
Sorry for the fun.
We're smashing it on fire today.
You make a point in your report and say, all committee meetings will remain closed, underline, to the public, however, the committee will entertain delegation. Counselors, I have an issue with that. I have a very serious issue for the following reason. There are elected officials on that committee, and there is a requisition of public funding that come to the town. How can it be a closed meeting? If you look at the Alberta Municipal Act, you will see that it's impossible. You must not have it closed, except for the three situations that deal with legal, personal, and business conflict of some sort. As for any other reason, I see none. And that has me seriously concerned. Last week, Marion put in your boxes a paper from Alberta Municipal Affairs that deal exactly with that very, very issue. I would suggest dig it, dig it out, read it, bring it to your meeting, discuss it, and come back with a different outcome, because it's not right.
That deals with, that deals with in camera, that, that...
No, it deals with the whole notion of public, public meetings.
So I felt it dealt with more in camera than it did with public meetings.
Well, maybe bring it back at the next meeting, read it again. Yes, Marion?
Yeah, the notice just came out from Municipal Affairs, and it does deal with in-camera sessions, but it very clearly outlines what should be dealt with in camera, and the assumption is that everything else would be in a public meeting. I guess, just to clarify what that, what that...
So, so committee meetings in general are supposed to be in a public...
So all general, all, all committee meetings have to be open to the public?
Yes, absolutely.
I know our library board meetings are all open.
Absolutely. Anybody can come, be, be an employee of that organization or not. When he comes, he's a citizen of the town.
I mean, if it's something specific, you can go in camera if it deals with one of those issues.
And you will go in camera for issues that are personal.
So question then is, ORSC and all those meetings, public meetings, open to the public?
People don't come, but they're open.
Are they, Counsel Evans?
They're open, they just don't have any voting rights.
Well, exactly.
Any...
And the Solid Waste Authority is an open meeting?
Every authority, every, every committee that has elected official and requests money...
We will, as the hearing presenters, take this back to the, to the chairman of the board and...
Yeah, I understand that maybe you may have people on that board that don't maybe understand that, that very issue, but I'm sure that you will help them.
Yeah, we will.
Yeah, we will.
I've had a concern too, first thing. I just didn't know what protocol was for this, because you couldn't...
Well, I understand...
Yes, it was.
Well...
We'll, we'll get a thing here.
Okay?
Take care of it, Mary.
Thank you. As for the rest, we have interlended, interagency committee minutes for your perusion, town council motion list. Any questions about that?
Can we just go back to committee reports for just a moment?
Oh, sorry.
I have additional information from communities in Bloom that I received since I wrote my report, and this was our evaluation date. As, you know, we elected to be evaluated as a community this year, and August eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, has been given to us as our evaluation date. So we will have judges coming to our town from the communities in Bloom to look at our community and give us a grade.
Counselor, can you just tell me then, in a past, it has been tradition to host a luncheon or breakfast? What are we up to?
We, yeah, we will, we will have an event, probably a luncheon of some sort. They'll have a tour. I think last time we took them on a, used the carriage...
Yeah, okay, all right.
And took them on a tour, but we, yeah, we will have, we will have a luncheon.
So the committee is looking after them. Okay, thank you.
That's August eleventh.
Thank you very much. Yes.
In the, I hate to, I hate to ask Counsel Board for this, in your, in your report, Counsel Board for this, it stated that Milk River come forward with a bill, and it was passed by the committee. How does that affect your budget?
We're still within our budget, but...
But you have in your committee, in your, in your program, that those bills are not to be paid throughout the year, there's a timeframe for those bills to be...
What, what it was is, we ended up basically, instead of it being put into last year's final report for our audited statements, it's now got rolled into this year. So it, it's a, it's a bookkeeping issue more than anything else. We had, we had surplus from last year because they didn't submit it last year, and now this year it will balance itself back out again. But it makes our audited statements a little inaccurate because they were audited without that being...
Okay.
Just as opposed, it can't go on like that.
Well, that was made quite clear to them.
Thank you. Thank you for that comment, as so that also, and you said they were taking care of that probably.
Any questions?
Go ahead, Counsel Peabody.
Yeah, and no disrespect to the distinguished counselor who's on the library committee. I found, I found, I found his report read like a book. I just wondered if next time you get some...
Did you like me to autograph it?
It's not as a novel, my friend.
It's a matter of personality. Thank you.
I'll work on that. I'll take the other advice.
We promised that we will be on time, so...
There's two reports here, by the way.
Let's go ahead.
I, I was looking over the C A O report, and I was looking over the cap...
We're not there yet. We're not there yet.
Oh, why are we?
No.
Oh, committee reports, okay.
All right, we are at town council motion list, and we just did a little flip backwards. Okay, so now we need to flip forward. All right, the C A, we are on this nine D C A O report, and as, as you could see, Marion took an awful lot of time to present her information so that you would be kept abreast of the progress that we are making in the different areas that are under her There are many things there to create interest if you want to read it. There are things in the bylaw and animal control. There is also the number of patrols that have been done. The only thing that doesn't appear, Marion, and maybe I will ask that just for information, the food patrol tells us that there has patrolling been done, but we don't know if there is subsequent follow-up to those food patrol or not.
That would be in the reports under this, any of the files?
Okay, so that would be under the open files or closed files? Okay, I understand now how to read that then. Thank you. Counsel Banbury?
In the C A O report, I have to ask Marion this, under the Parks and Recreation capital expenditures, we're running, we're running pretty high there. Are we going to be all right?
We have, yeah, we have the one big purchase as part of that capital expenditure, so you won't see a lot of things balance out on an equal twelve-month basis, right? And so it's a lot, and especially in capital, it'll be, you'll have nothing and all of a... And so it's a lot, and especially in capital, it'll be, you'll have nothing and all of a sudden you'll have a bolt. Three-quarters of bolt.
But should we present the acquisition of the asset when you purchased it? Yes councillor?
My concern also is if we look at the capital expenditures and compare the different departments, our Parks and Recreation have a tremendous budget as versus to Public Works. Public Works is a big budget, but our sewer and our other capital costs in water are very low-budget items compared to these two. Why is our Parks and Recreation got such a large budget?
Because it gets classified as Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, you'll see that fluctuate year to year. There will be years when Sewer will have the lion's share of the funding. It's just all based on priority projects. And when we look at the three-year budget, we have our asset management and we're looking at what needs replaced. So you're going to see that fluctuate over the years. It's not a standard thing to see Parks and Recreation have more. And especially, you know, if you consider we've been doing the pool the last few years.
That's what I was going to say. The pool is what is the bulk.
You know, that'll show a substantial increase. But when we did the downfall line and we did a four-and-a-half million dollar project on the sewer line, you would have seen that that was significantly higher than any other department.
I just want to make sure that mowing the grass does not take precedence over infrastructure.
Mowing the grass isn't...
It's an operation.
Under Parks and Recreation though, I don't, you know, their capital expenditures.
If I might say, there has to be a balance, right? Because the citizens expect a certain level of recreation services in the community. And so, like I said, we have to look at all of our asset management and our capital plan. And we have to replace some of that equipment over time. We can't allow our Parks and Recreation equipment to deteriorate to the point that it all has to be replaced at one time. So we try and schedule that appropriately.
Okay.
Hopefully our Public Works is getting an equal amount of capital expenditures, you know, if they need new grader, new trucks, or stuff like that.
Yes, they are. They're not fighting over money.
Thank you. All right. Nine E, thank you for your input. Nine E, two thousand and fourteen, citizens satisfaction survey result. As you could see, there is, there were hundred and twenty-nine citizens who took the time to answer that survey. It's a good beginning. We want to gain momentum. The only way to gain momentum is for citizens to understand that those citizens satisfaction survey have an impact on the business that we do at a table. Especially when we do planning every year. So we need to get the population involved. Marion?
We're just looking on your, on your OneDrive. The questions, are they showing up on yours? For the pie charts?
Yes, we have them.
Okay, the pie charts are, but is the question?
Yes, yes.
Is it a question? Okay, so let me just...
On mine, I do have them.
It's on the paper document, but for some reason I didn't scan...
Are you talking about these ones here?
Those, those.
That one?
Yeah. There's no questions?
I have. Mine does.
Yeah, mine doesn't.
Okay, let me tell you what the questions are. The first, the first one is the age of the person?
Yeah, yours is just like mine.
The second one is how many years they've lived in Cardston? And the third one is how would you rate the overall quality of life in Cardston? Okay?
Just tell me that again. The first one is?
The age of the person filling out the survey.
Okay.
The second one is how many years they've lived in the town of Cardston?
Okay.
And the third is how would they rate the overall quality of life?
Okay.
Sorry about that.
That's all right.
Some data that might be really interesting to see is on the notes there, how that relates, for example, to the ages of the people making those comments and how long they've been in Cardston for. That would be interesting to find.
You know what I found?
Yeah, would be interesting.
Councillor, what I found interesting is when you look at how many years have you lived in a town of Cardston? Have a look at that. Thirty-eight percent have lived in this town for less than ten years. That should tell us something. There's a migration towards our town.
If I can just make one comment here, remember we only have a hundred and twenty-nine responses. So please don't put too much...
I would say that actually doesn't say that. It shows that thirty-eight percent of our population has changed over the years, not that we've had more migration.
Well, it has changed. But it could be migration, it could be change internal. Family growing.
We haven't grown. It's an indication that thirty-eight percent have left.
Yes.
And that's what I was getting at.
Yes. But we still are in balance. We're still not going anywhere.
Thirty-eight percent of hundred and twenty-nine is not much.
Exactly. It's a very, very small sample.
All right. So you need to go to the press release on the survey. The two thousand and fourteen, at the very end of this document, Jeff has prepared a little bit of... Graham has prepared a press release for us. And you need to... Yeah, at the end of that survey.
The highlighted results, is that what it's called?
Yes. And we need to have a motion to send this for press release. Councillor Pivoy?
Is, is it possible, I mean, I'm guessing that after this press release, people will all of a sudden feel like, hey, I didn't participate. Is there any way that they could just go fill it out ongoing, like?
Well, I think the hope is, I don't think you want to do it ongoing because it skews your results, right? Because you want to take that at a point in time. So today I'm angry, tomorrow I'm going to fill it out again and say I'm happy, right? The hope is that we will have additional input every year. So we'll start to see that participation rate increase and it will definitely give us better statistics as we move forward. So we just want to make sure that the citizens are aware that we even did the survey and we appreciate those who participated. And our hope is that additional citizens will participate in the future. And that council will use this information appropriately to help guide your decisions.
So what one?
Go ahead.
I was going to say, one of the things that I took out of the surveys I was going through, and I spent most of my time reading the comments section. We haven't done a great job in communicating to people why we've been doing what we've been doing, whether they have been hearing it or where the problem is there. Because a lot of the things that are brought up in those comments there, I don't think most of those people would feel the same way about those issues if they saw the whole picture tonight.
They have the answer.
But having said that, having said that, I really feel that many people in this town are very appreciative of all the effort that we make to communicate what we do to them. I have had more, more thank you for the work we've done communicating what we're doing in the past two months than I ever had when I was on town council before. And I'm thinking we might be moving in the right direction. Because even today again, I had somebody call me up and say, you don't know how much we appreciate the letter to the citizen. And I'm thinking, well, that's great. And we're doing something right.
When I looked at the bar graphs and I looked at road repairs and their satisfaction on that, I looked at least control, and then I went down to the comments section. And it was totally different.
Well, that don't make a...
And that's what I appreciated about the comments section.
And I think a part of that is, is that if you are upset about the roads, you're going to make a comment about that. But in general, in front of my house, the road is relatively good. I wouldn't call it bad. It's not something that would be an issue. Yet, like everybody else in town, I've driven by roads and have quite a few new puddles. If I was going through those every single day, that would be the one thing that would be on my mind and I would be squeaking about that.
But you know, last week I had a wonderful comment saying, please pass on to the Public Works the great jobs they did to fill the holes. So you hear it both ways, right?
But this is what I'm saying, is as you look at the comments section compared to the graphs, it's turning out...
Okay, we cannot pass too much more time on that.
I'm just going to mention, you know, because some of the comments concerned me and so I just actually counted how many comments there were comparing to how many... So less than half of the people that completed the survey may comment. And people that may comment tend to be negative. That was what I observed.
Okay, well, that's all right. Okay, thank you very much. Let's go on to correspondence here. Oh, we had a motion to put a press release. We have voted on that yet.
Right. All I would, all I would maybe add is right at the end of that press release is maybe just our request that more people participate in the survey next year.
Yeah, I think that we could add that. I think would be a very good recommendation. Thank you.
And then I'll move to adopt the survey results as amended.
All in favor? To release, to release the highlights of the survey. Thank you. Okay, correspondence. Community Future Alberta Southwest, as you know, it was presented to us. What we need to know is how many people want to participate in those strategy game and to understand how it affects your town when you do this or that.
What was the date?
The date, you have to be late and you have Friday, June the sixth on twelve to four, Friday, June the thirteenth on twelve to four, or Saturday, June fourteenth, twelve to four. My preference is Friday, June the thirteenth. But you can go in any of those categories. Doesn't mean that we have to go as in town.
Well, they're only going to do it one time. These are possible.
What our preferences are.
They want to know what our preferences are, when we want to go.
And how many people are going.
As many as want to go.
Yeah, I'd be for the Saturday.
For the Saturday, Pivoy, Saturday, councillor Barnes?
I'm easy. Saturday or Friday, whichever.
Okay, so open, Barnes are open.
Saturday because I don't have to take a day off work.
Okay, there you go, Barnes, Saturday. Benry?
Saturday.
Saturday, councillor Creed?
I think Saturday.
Saturday?
Saturday.
Saturday?
I guess Saturday.
It's Saturday. There we go. No problem. Okay. You are amazing. All right.
Cronin, are you attending as well?
Yeah, I will go Saturday since the...
So do we need to reply ourselves or?
No, the town will do that.
Thank you. Bye tomorrow, yeah.
Okay, Alberta Health Services, paramedics quick. Thanks to paramedics for the good work. South Crow is for the AGM coming up. And if I remember right, is on the eleventh of June. And we normally have designated the citizen at large as being one of the participant. The other one, the one who is in part on that committee, it's myself. If any councillor absolutely wants to go there that is interested, I would imagine councillor Barfis would be properly in a priori.
What was the date of it?
June eleventh. You're well fed.
That's not a problem I usually have to worry about.
Question on that one. I noticed they're calling for nominations on the management board. Is that something maybe we should try to get someone from Cardston on?
I am on it.
You're on the management board, right? Oh, I didn't realize. That's great. Yay.
One question, we have a citizen at large on the board.
Yeah. Jeff, could you please let, tell councillor the citizen at large that we...
Mike Parker is our citizen at large at the board?
Okay, we're going to get, try to get him to come and...
How many people are going to this?
He has a voting right. We have two voting rights for a town.
Mike Parker is going to be moving to Leicestershire, probably the end of last...
Oh, Levitt, actually.
Oh, yeah.
We can look at it then.
We'll look at it. But councillor Barfis, if you're interested. Okay. Friends Society Remington Carriage Museum, obviously is, the mayor will have the privilege to be in a beautiful horse-tron carriage for the opening of the musical riot for the RCMP. I would like to know from Jeff, what are we going to do to advertise it as broad and wide as we can to get as much impact on that one?
We'll have to do some things. We had a small subcommittee interactive board assigned to it. I think councillor Barfis might have been on said committee. Was that yours? Okay, sorry. So, yeah, we'll have a small campaign we'll put together for that.
Thank you. WCB is an interesting item on the eleven E. WCB has managed to get more income from their investment as expected. So they're turning back the money back to the towns. And we should, as council, feel it a good time to recognize all our workers in this town for the fantastic jobs they've done to reduce our rates with our WCB over the years, one year after the other, for the safety record that they have had. Right now is money that is surplus, we didn't expect it. And I wondered if we can take a little portion of that money to recognize them with supper, take them out.
How much money are we talking here?
How much was returned?
Ninety-six hundred and...
Ninety-six hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Yeah.
A hundred and ninety-seven dollars.
So I'm thinking maybe...
Why don't we have a barbecue right off, slightly civic center here?
You know, something, maybe can we do a little better? Can we do sitting dinner for them or something like that?
Have a barbecue and buy jackets or something like that?
You know what we should do is maybe let a barbecue in that...
Council cook steaks for this town.
Sure.
Okay, all right. So why does administration, administration pass it down by their staff? And essentially what we need is to allow administration to decide what it would look like.
Well, if we have barbecue and people have a jacket or something like that. I think that's a great idea. Safety jacket, safety barbecue.
We do get a jacket every five years, I believe the policy is. Under our Partners in Injury Reduction Program. But if you wanted to do something special with this, we could look into...
A shirt or something. Something, okay? So do you need, do you need a motion for that?
I'll make that motion. Whereas we have a return on our WCB premiums, I make a motion that we have a...
A special appreciation event.
A safety barbecue for our staff.
It'll be a safe barbecue.
Yeah, and a presentation that administration will bring forward.
Thank you. All in favor? Okay, thank you. Alberta Tourism Parks and Rec, it's a two thousand and fourteen energized workshop. It's not traditional that we send anybody there. It's quite costly. So let's go to eleven G, AHS. That is a more pressing item. You have a letter on your table that has been distributed by administration. They talked about the follow-up to the session that we had here in town on May seventh. And councillor Pivoy and councillor Creed were there. What they're requesting here is for one extra person to sit along with... So they said to designate from the town council of Cardston to sit. So I will go and I need one extra person. I know that councillor Edmonds expressed some interest in that. Would that be okay with, with council?
He's an actual employee.
Okay, so councillor Ed... So Counselor Edmonds want to be the representative, so we need to have a motion to approve the designated, one being myself and the other one, Counselor Edmonds. Counselor Poy?
I move that the mayor and Counselor Edmonds be our designees on the Cardston Health Center Redevelopment Committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I guess it's the Health Service Plan.
All in favor? Thank you. And we will keep you abreast of the changes. Well, the rest is confidential items, so I need a motion to go in camera, Counselor Barfus.
I want to go on camera.
Thank you. Thank you very much to our media for their faithful work. You can turn your mics off.